Recording in progress.
I will call the work session for the Anchorage School Board to order on October fifteenth at four oh four P M. We have Member Higgins, Jacobs, Donnelly, Hallman and Bellamy in the room. Member Lessons is excused and Member Wilson will be joining us online shortly. First, and this is to Section B. On the work session agenda, board requests for information. I think everybody should have a copy of the existing R F Is. They're pending. Does anyone have additional R F Is? Uh, Member Jacob?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I sent a email for categorization with an R F I related to the academies of Anchorage. And this was as much mapping out um information that I am needing ahead of our juncture. Uh, coming up next month related to schedule change as as much as uh needing something right now this week or next. And so um in front of the board is a a list of five different items which um I think are all relevant data points that I think we want before we um engage in a meaningful conversation on the on a potential skele- schedule change. Um, a master list for the eight comprehensive high schools for an eight period day, which um helps drill down on the number of instructors required, an update on um progress on the amendment the board passed on the A S D memorandum number one six two, where it was the master plan, um documentation regarding the opt out paperwork uh for clarity for the board for how that process is working. More information and clarity on the de-selection process for students and how we're gonna navigate that given current labor market challenges and then um information regarding a timeline on graduation requirements related to C T E component. Um, hopefully all those data points are useful to other members besides myself and I'd be grateful to get those from administration as time allows. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to sign in on those requests? I will um behind Member Jacobs as a priority. Member Donnelly?
Yeah, I I agree with this request. We support it.
Thank you. Any other comments or requests at this time? Seeing none, uh, that takes us to Section C, right sizing.
All right, Mr. President, so we'll go ahead and uh ask our speakers to to come to the front. Um, but while they get up here to set up, uh, I just wanna uh let the board know that we'll be continuing our right sizing conversation today. And um of note, I I want the board members to remember that last time we previewed a rubric and a set of potential discussion points, also known as guardrails. You're going to see those again today and uh at the end, by the end of this presentation, I I'd like to have a sense about how the board feels about the particular tool and guardrails and provide any wonderings or concerns or feedback because I'd really like to iron that out um today if possible, because the only um if the board overall supports the tool informally today, we'll be able to conduct the analysis that'll allow us to stay on track um with the next phase of the plan. Um, so your feedback is welcome. Um, we may ask for an informal poll, but I just want to clarify as always, any sort of straw poll is completely voluntary, optional, and of course, non-binding, um because the board will officially review this as part of the budget process. This is really just to give us the green light to move forward. So I want to respect the board's autonomy on that front. So with that disclaimer, uh, I'll hand it off to Jim Anderson.
Thank you. So obviously, we've got um four of us up here briefing tonight. We'll go through a variety of different topics as to where we stand. Uh, the first one is is obviously our goal is what properly properly resource schools look like with a focus on the education level of service and of course, ultimately student outcomes. So this would be the sixth briefing since last April on right sizing. You can see the the different topics over time. I think we've covered the gamut from projections last spring through actual enrollment now. And um as you'll see over the next month or so, more and more and more details every time we brief as to where we stand. So at this time, I hand off to Kirsten to talk about school zone boundaries and how we look at those.
All right. Hi, everyone. Um, I'm here um to talk about the different boundaries and just the intricacies that go into school boundaries. Um, so this slide really just um is a review of what we've talked about with the board previously, that we have a pretty steady decline in um birth rate population within the city of Anchorage um and school district. And so if you look um going back all the way to two thousand fourteen, you can see from two thousand fourteen to this year in a ten year period, we we've lost about ten thousand babies a year or a thousand babies a year, not ten thousand, sorry. Um, a thousand babies um a year being born in the city or municipality of Anchorage. And so that is expected to continue decline in the near future, which obviously affects our our elementary and preschool enrollment and therefore our high school and middle school enrollment down the line. Um, and so that's why you're seeing a steady decline in our population across the district. So additionally, um when you really look at the two boxes um off to the side that show our school capacity for elementary and middle school, you'll see that we have um in the elementary area, we have a significant number of our schools that are underutilized and under seventy percent or sixty-five percent utilized in terms of of how many students could attend that school. And then when you look um conversely at middle school, you'll see that there's a disproportionate amount of enrollment at different middle schools. Some middle schools are very full and well utilized, especially with the move of sixth grade this year. And then there are other schools that are significantly underutilized. And um so you see the two schools there that are under sixty percent utilization. So what that tells us about the boundaries is that we need less elementary schools to house our students. And we need to take a really good look at our middle school boundaries so that we get more equitable distribution of students across the district and um balance that load a little bit. So. So going back into boundaries a little bit deeper on what you'll see on this slide is a a feeder pattern of schools. So you'll see in the green, the big green boxes, those are all of our elementary schools moving over to where they feed into middle school and then into high school. And what you'll notice in those feeder schools um that is significant when we start talking about boundaries, that there are some elementary schools that are divided between two and three middle schools as a feeder pattern. And then you also will notice that there are middle schools that go into two or three different high schools. And so those create some challenges for kids in transition when they're used to a friend group and a community, and then maybe that friend group or community is broken um to two different schools or three different schools. And so when we're looking at different goals around school zones, um, one of the things that we really look at is can we keep kids together? Um, because it's important for friend groups and that social acceptance moving from level to level. Um, additionally, though, we're looking at how we can balance student uh enrollment between high and low enrollment schools um so that we have a more even distribution. We are looking at different um replacements, renovations or school closures to be efficient with our buildings. We also really want to support all of our specialized programs, whether they are special education programs or special academic programs um and focus programs. We want to make sure that we take care of those um established special programs in our schools and our kids who um really need some extra care. And then we also want to reduce the number of school transitions. I talked a little bit already about keeping students together, but we don't want kids to continually having to make social adjustments every time they transition that are beyond the normal scope. Um, and that's why keeping those those uh feeder patterns tight is really important. And then we also really want to look at what, how do we best offer an education to kids in every part of our school district? So um so looking at it in a little bit more real life example, um, this is a particular part of town. This is um in in kind of midtown-ish area. Um, so you'll see um it's it, there's um pink dots here. Those students attend Taku Elementary. So every one of those pink dots on the map is a student um and where they live in the Taku attendance area. And then the blue dots you'll see. Um, I'm sorry, the pink dots are Campbell Stem and the blue dots are Taku Elementary. And you'll see the blue lines which indicate the different middle school boundaries. And so right now, Taku is one of our schools that um is split between two different uh feeder patterns for middle school. Some students go to Romeg and some students go to Hanchu. And this is just a scenario to illustrate the example of trying to keep kids together. So if we were to really look at keeping those kids together and having a solid feeder system, one of the adjustments we could make for those blue dotted students is to send them to Hanchu so that all students that go to Taku go to Hanchu and it would help solve our middle school enrollment issue with Romeg being very full and Hanchu being less full. And we would really take care of families in that process um and students. So I just wanted to illustrate it with with a real life example of how that could benefit kids with reboundering some of our our schools.
I do just want to interject that Member Wilson has joined us online. Thank you. Please continue.
So the last board meeting, we had this discussion. Um, initially, we we were averse to calling it guardrail just to make sure there was no confusion between the board guardrails that take a year to do and these, but it's really, what is the guidance from the board on the things that um really are unacceptable to the board? Or you want to make sure we don't go down the wrong path? Um, and that really is to make sure we have expectation management from the board. So when we do brief our recommendations, that we're staying within these these barriers you gave us to make sure that we focus our efforts. It actually helps us in a lot of ways. One, um, it helps us narrow our focus and and not go so broad that we can't put the appropriate amount of staff into looking at the schools. Um, but really it is to make sure that that we have feedback from the board. So the first one was, um, you know, were schools on the original list? Are they automatically uh prevented from being on a future list, i.e. this year? Um, and our recommendation was that we analyze the schools. We have a a different rubric now. We have a staff that's now worked together on these kinds of projects um much more closely over the last couple of years. And so we recommend that that we really be able to look at um all the schools that ultimately meet the criteria. The second was, um, if there was a special program, um, does that mean we don't look at the school? And our recommendation was to look at the program and if at all possible, keep those programs intact. And those are things like optional Montessori immersion, um, others. And because it could be that there it's such a small program that you may not want to use that as the overriding reason um to keep them in a building that otherwise has so many disadvantages. And then finally, um, just to confirm, we we started last April talking about we already have K twelves. We already have um other different types of programs. So um just to confirm, is the board okay with us looking at when boundaries don't work or school closures don't work or busing can't support any other options? Um, that we do have that flexibility to look at considering alternative models, uh, many of which we already have. And and I think this is the the time where the board can speak. If you've put some thought into this, if you have some new ones, if you have thoughts on these and almost, I think it's the very last slide, we'll do one final look at this slide one more time. And then all we're really looking for is head nods, thumbs ups, um, something that in general, the board is okay with the direction we're headed. So I'll hand it off to the board at this point.
Any discussion questions from board members? Member Bellamy?
Uh, I'm I'm for the, uh, I agree with the um, we're not gonna call them guardrails, the guidance that uh we have established. But I thought um Member Lessons had one other thing get, or was that, or am I? I can't remember what it is, but I thought she may have had one other thing. Do you recall?
I I know that Member Lessons was trying to grapple with ways to meet all of our um diverse learners, especially in um underserved communities, but she hadn't formulated a specific guardrail on how to um reach our underserved students as far as I realize. Um, but that's why we wanted to bring it up again today.
Okay. All right. I just didn't want us to forget that. If uh, because I know that and I have some feelings about it, but I don't know what her actual question is. I I know it does have to do with diverse learners and how we can capture that in the guidance, but um uh, but what we have now, the whole harmless to special programs and uh looking at our uh, looking at alternative models when we can. Um, I I agree with all of those. Thank you.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so I don't, I don't think I have any changes or modifications to the the three. Um, I just forgot the word we're using since they're not guarded. I'm just gonna say guardrails. Um, and I I asked this question last week and I I think that this is covered further down, the things I guess that I'm tracking that are important to me, that I also hope we can get consensus about today. And maybe there already is consensus and administration is always already working forward in in such a way. Um, one that we're going to um prioritize and seriously consider as an option for buildings that may be empty as a result of consolidation, the opportunity or um just vacant spaces in general, um a portion of a building um seriously consider the utilization of those spaces for um childcare opportunities specifically as it relates to Proposition fourteen long-term funding as well as what I I think will looking five miles down the road a bit, um, once Prop fourteen funding um is disseminated and and passed out to the districts, the legislature will get on board because that will be exciting to folks who want to see something in their district. So capital funding requests are, it's just inevitable. It will be part of the next, the thirty-fourth legislature. Um, so I think that there's, if we're, if we um are careful and then looking a few miles down the road, I think we can take advantage of that. The other thing that I brought up last um at our last meeting is, you know, if we're going to utilize um facilities to reduce overhead for our charter programs, um, um, part of it is a question and I guess part of it is hopefully a priority. Um, will administration come to us with a school identified um to utilize a facility? Will the board be able to provide input um prior to the district naming a school? Um, if there is a facility that we anticipate with, you know, immediately or within a few years, um, can take advantage of a a building that um has been the emptied because of consolidation? Or is that time to provide guidance now? And the reason why I ask is that I, for one, would appreciate the district as a part of a component in identifying a charter school, um, asking our charter programs, who has the the best path forward to um, bridge the gap related to the school district board guardrail related to transportation and uh making charter access to charter programs equitable? So if there's a charter program out there that has a means of helping funnel additional funds via savings through um reduced capital um costs, uh, because they'll have a building or if they have grant funds, I think they can tap into if there's a one charter program that has a is is far and above others in terms of ways that they can bring down that barrier, um, be the first to do that. I think that that that's a program I would like to give priority to. Um, and so that's kind of the lens for that second half of the question. Thanks.
I I think that the best way to uh to announce the repurposing is first to announce the initial list of closures um or potential closures, recommended closures, um, to include which schools we would combine those students. Um, and then work with the charter schools that we think are likely candidates for those schools, but I don't think we want to start working with them um prematurely for so many reasons. Uh, we need to pre-brief principals of all impacted schools before um, you know, the community because they've got to work with their staff and assist them through it. We have a plan to, and and Marty can talk part of this, um, but we we have a plan to work with the staff and help them through this. Obviously, we've done this before. We also know that we want to pre-brief the school board members before the list goes public because that would be status quo for your expectations and ours. So it it would be pretty unlikely to be able to have also coordinated with a potential repurpose program or school without bypassing all of our normal um steps.
I follow Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, so I appreciate that and that that gives me guidance because it sounds like love another bite the apple to provide feedback um to the administration, which is appreciated. Um, does it seem feasible that as part of, once we get to that second layer of decision-making where we have buildings that are potentially open to alternate use by a charter optional program that we can include and ask that um APCs or other optional program leadership identify a way to bring down the transportation barrier and have that be extra credit for their request to have a have utilize a building? Um, I'm thinking through like Stream Academy to me, I'll just speak for myself as a Eastside resident, makes a ton of sense remaining on the east side if we have a elementary school that where there's excess capacity. Um, I would hope that, you know, the they have a great connected network. I would hope that they can come up with some sort of way, whether it be short or long term, to identify ways to provide transportation so other folks in other parts of town and families in other parts of town can take advantage of their program. And if they can, I'd like to see them get extra credit for that in theory while we're deciding who's going where.
We we have talked through that and the mechanics of that is pretty simple. Um, when a charter school goes into a district facility, we would ask them to sign a memorandum of agreement which would lay out what their responsibilities were, what our responsibilities were. Um, we haven't updated Aquarians in many years. Um, we did the same thing with A N C C S. And if that's the direction that the board wanted to go, then we would include that um in the the memorandum and agreement with the APC that um these are your responsibilities upon occupation of a facility in which you're not charged rent.
And uh, one last follow-up, Mr. Chair. And is that guidance we we don't need to provide until the second round of decision-making then?
Um, I I would think you can wait as long as um the middle of December, that board meeting. Although naturally, if between now and then, four or more board members are nodding specifically with you or vigorously, then we we would probably go ahead and start writing that memorandum and drafting it.
Well, um, uh, not as much of a follow-up as a comment, Mr. Chair. Um, I am hopeful we can get a a round of vociferous head nodding um while we're doing board guidance and maybe we can take Member Wilson's uh word forward as she chimes in online. But um, if while we're doing a a straw poll, um, we can ask um board members to express interest in asking our charter programs to provide transportation as part of utilizing uh vacated facilities as part of the right sizing plan uh to address transportation. I would, I would ask that you um pull the board on that too. Thanks.
Okay.
For the record on that, this is the first time in an A S D meeting I've ever seen a microphone leak to its death.
It was from a former staff member who didn't make it through a briefing with a school board.
Well, it is Halloween. So we have a ghost in the machine.
There could be a ghost in the microphone. Um, I I did want to say that generally I'm in agreement with the discussion points. Um, and I'll say that when the the list came out last year, when I looked at each school individually and looked at the attendance map and looked at where kids were headed and the communities they came out of, um, every recommendation by the administration made sense to me. Like I I could look at it and kind of go, I see what you're doing here. I see why this school can work more smoothly than than some of these schools over here. And and unfortunately, that means that some of those same schools may bubble up again. Um, and and I feel for them. Um, but they weren't on the list the first time because we were examining the school. Uh, it wasn't about performance. It wasn't about anybody proving that they had the the right to exist or anything. It was simply the logistics of trying to shrink into a smaller um physical platform. Um, I I feel sad to say to them, your your name may come up again. Don't take it personally. There's no way anyone doesn't take it personally when that happens, but uh it it makes sense to me and that I think we're bound to try to make the best choices, even if that means some schools may get uh looked at again and have to go through the whole part again. I'd also say that unless there's a reason for disbanding a special program, um, you know, if one seems to be location dependent and moving it is gonna have a big impact. I could see where we might end it, but otherwise, I hope priority would be given to keeping special programs intact. Um, and ongoing mainly because it uh even as we're doing something that causes some upheaval, that that's a measure of uh familiarity and continuity that I think would mean a lot to students if they're in the middle of something like that, but but otherwise, I really do applaud the administration for the work they came up with last year and uh I know going through it again with a slightly different uh set of parameters, it's a lot of the same work again. Um. But yeah, I think you should look at all schools while we're doing that. Any other comments from board members? Member Bellamy?
I just want to make sure we are real, that we don't cause confusion when we are trying to cover so much. I mean, it's just seems to me like we will have people out there. We already have people who are writing requesting a space. Uh, that space may not, it it so we can't, I don't want there to appear to be any kind of um, I don't know uh what to even call it. I just don't want people thinking that that we are creating a system that's going to guarantee some a building and some not a building. Um, and I don't know the answer, I think. But we need to make sure that what, because we're closing schools consolidating or repurposing. And at the same time, we're trying to create this this uh this criteria for if you do get our building. I I don't know. I just don't want there to be any confusion. So if we can maybe keep that at top of mind, and I'm not stating it as articulate as it but it just hits me that that could be a potential outcome. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Seeing none, if you wish to continue.
Okay, so when we looked at the surveys and we did a little bit deeper dive of the survey last week, we did look at a lot of the the broad categories um of of how we could look at components of rightsizing and what people felt strongest about. They were okay with less looking at these types of components. And we've been talking about the the rubric for a while. Um, so I wanted to walk through. Um, these are the components of the rubric. The actual rubric is an Excel spreadsheet that's probably about right now because we're we're not quite done with the whole thing, about a hundred and fifty different columns and an awful lot of rows of different types of data. Um, but they're all broken out so we can we can evaluate each school in a number of ways and give an initial rating. So when you look at staffing effectiveness, we do it, we do look at these partial staff increments because there's some schools where a staff member may be there for four hours in an entire week because they're a one-section school. So if someone misses that Monday or Thursday or whatever day of the week that staff person could be there, the the odds of them seeing that particular specialist or staff person again is is almost zero until the following week. Um, so that will be rated on a score of five to one. Um, five being worst, uh meaning really small partial staff increments and special staff and sped itinerant staff. Um, and we'll also be looking at the percentage of combos, the intentional combos. There are schools that that um they intentionally have combo classes, so naturally we wouldn't hold that against them. And honestly, I could look at the spreadsheets when I first started looking at the enrollment and I could tell, and I think Kirsten, most of us could tell immediately which schools before we even got the combos list had the most combos. And it's because you could tell there was fifteen first graders, thirty-two second graders, you knew there's going to be a combo class. And you could see it really, really quickly. So so far, I don't think most of us were really surprised by that, but we will do that score. And then the the overall score for school impacts. And this kind of gets at a a few things the school boards talked about. Um, the percent economically disadvantaged, the percent sped, the percent ELL, and we actually revert, we reverse score that. Um, where if you can't take care of that building because there's other factors that make that school um really have a low overall score, you've identified upfront that you're going to put all of your resources into making sure we take care of those students. Uh, much like what we did with Abbott Loop, when the students moved primarily to Cassoon. Um, I think the board is probably cannot recall an email that came the following year saying that people were really disenchanted with the whole move. And and as we briefed about a month ago, we actually saw statistically significant um academic improvement in it, but it wasn't, it wasn't because it was a fluke. It was all those things Kirsten talked about, keeping friend groups together, doing all these things. Field trips to the school, swag bags, everything to make sure they were truly incorporated. Um, but we still do want to recognize and and I don't know that this is what uh member lessons was getting after, but but it is important to make sure that that group in one way is identified from start to finish through the staffing process. Then the community growth potential. Um, we do know where the the new housing currently is being planned. Um, we we have seen enrollment decline expectations and I'll show you one little minor deep dive in a little bit so you can see the types of data that we're looking at. We will look at um alternative use of the facilities and the percent of zero to four population, and that's what we'll do a little bit of a deep dive or a deeper dive. Um, because you can see in certain areas that these areas are going to ki- are still having babies and they're still producing future kindergarteners. And so that that is certainly a factor as to whether you would close that school or an area where it's almost zero, zero to fourth grader or four-year-olds. Um. Again, that's five to one as well. We'll look at utilization and projections at both school year twenty-six and thirty. And of course, we have that data already. Um, once we got the thirty September enrollment this year. Facility condition is complicated. Um, there's multiple different things that impacted, but obviously um, we 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 have scores and criteria for those. And then finally, when we looked at cost effectiveness of buildings, we actually broke it out a little bit different. So we did the maintenance and the operational cost, which is the whole staffing of the cost per student at a school. Um, we did that cost per student and then for utilities, it's cost per square foot because we have elementaries anywhere from forty mid forty thousand square feet um into the sixty-five plus thousand square feet. And obviously, if if a school is really doesn't have a lot of people in there, you're still heating the entire building. Um, it doesn't mean that any one of these automatically to include utilization rates. So the first time we show utilization rates or we show facility condition index, it doesn't mean that those are the red flashy lights, that those are the schools that need to close. Because there's all these other factors that that we will take into account and I think this better represents it. So now we have the rubric and now it's a much smaller on the left. All the rubric does is narrow down the list of potential schools. Because nobody can do detailed staff to include transportation analysis on eighty schools in a four-week period, but the rubric helps identify these are the schools that are either going to receive something or someone or lose something or someone, and these are the main reasons why we would look at it. But then you go to Heather Philp and her amazing team of two people who do all transportation analysis of routes for the district. And if you simply can't, in every other world, this school may have the lowest number, but there's no way you can get those kids to school on a forty-five-minute bus loop, which means none of those buses would make it to high school and none of those buses would make it to middle school. Then that's not the school you're going to close. And then we look at boundary impacts, which Kirsten talked about. Um, you know, major arterial roads create more bus opportunities, prevent people from walking. So as we start looking at those, and a really good one, I think, and I'll let Kirsten take it from here. It is, we have a lot of different demograph demographics, but this is just one um on age zero to four population.
So this goes back to the birth rate conversation that was mentioned um in the previously in the presentation. And so when you look at this map, um, you'll see red areas and green areas and colors in between. The red area indicates areas where babies are are not being born regionally in in our municipality. And the green area represents um areas that there are um a lot of babies being born still within within our city. And there are the colors in between. This is a more detailed map of the Anchorage Bowl Bowl area, and you'll notice that the northern um Jay Bear kind of northeastern side of town is um still having a lot of babies. And um you'll notice that there's other pockets within the city that have um higher birth rates. And then you'll also notice pockets of red where um populations are aging out of the childbirth um range of age and um people are essentially living in that neighborhood, but they they aren't parents um of small children anymore. And so what this tells us, in addition to the analysis that Jim has been talking about, is um where our population of kindergarten enrollment is going to start spiking and where we're going to need additional seats for kids um in buildings.
So of course we have those for um all of the, all of the areas around town. Um, but I thought that was a a good a good look at just one of the many things that we do a deep dive that in any other world really don't fit in a rubric where there's a point one, three, four. It it, some things just have to be, okay, now let's put this filter overlay and this filter overlay. And when we look at Title One and CEP, um, and I won't go into all these, um, because we're going to be talking for the next three months. So um, but but what we look at is when you saw those little squares uh when she showed the uh boundary map. So we, when we work with Shannon Bingham from Western Demographics, we've got all the data in this software where we can tell how many are um economically disadvantaged students, how many are sped. We can look at the different programs. So when we look at change in boundaries, we actually can see the impact of those boundary changes and we can do the same thing with school closures. Because now if a school closes, we're changing the boundaries for where they go. And in Abbott Loop, we knew really quickly that we might not be able to make Cassoon a Title One school. And then once we did the detailed numbers by student, um, we confirmed that we couldn't make it a Title One school, but we could make it a CEP school. So it is that complicated when you're looking at, I have this school closing. We need to split the kids into three different schools. That the first thing is do no harm to the students who are already struggling. And and so we do look at a lot of different things that wouldn't fit in the initial rubric that we're asking you to approve. Um, but we certainly will be able to talk about them and and explain why we chose this school over that school, but it's it is certainly more complicated than utilization rate. Um. And now I get to hand off to Tony.
All right, so we want to keep you updated on the progression of our timeline and what we have coming up and also give you um some insight into some more feedback and community engagement events that we have planned. So as we move forward with the progression of the timeline, after the list of possible schools affected by the rightsizing initiative is released, which will happen November fourth, we will host a community conversation series that will replace the traditional town halls that were done last time. The series will be held at various locations across town. So southeast, we will also have um Eagle River and Chugiak area will have a number of different options, including virtual morning times and evening times. We will also host a special MEACAC meeting where we'll invite representation from our other two main advisory groups. So the Native Advisory Committee and the Special Advisory Committee. Um, overall, these community conversations will serve the dual purpose of continuing to update and inform the community about the process and gathering ongoing feedback um on what we're putting out. Our goal is really to ensure that all community members have ample opportunities to participate and share their thoughts. Um, and make sure that they have input on the future of our district. After that, the rightsizing plan will appear on the December third board meeting agenda under non-action. And that will be followed by the board's vote if we keep on timeline December seventeenth um of the plan.
All right. Um, good afternoon. I'll talk a little bit about uh the staff reassignment part of this. We know that anytime we close a school, that it is uniquely disruptive to that community. Um, Jim talked about many of the ways, like when we closed Abbott Loop, that we were very intentional about supporting students in that transition. We equally want to be as intentional because we know this is disruptive for staff as well. Um, as soon as a staff member hears that their school is closing, many will think, do I have a job next year? And the first thing that we want to communicate to them is absolutely. Our intention is for us to um to move their job placement to another building and to the largest extent possible, give them some preference in in how that happens. So typically, um, in the past, when we've closed a school, um, the FTE for that closure follows the students to the new buildings. Um, in some cases, that might be all of the students going to one other neighborhood school or maybe being divided um amongst several schools. And so that FTE um for that staff would be divided as well. Typically, in in January, February, we will meet with the staff um at each of those schools that um are experiencing a closure. We'll bring the talent management team in. We'll come and answer questions. We'll talk about where students are going, how much FTE is going to each of those schools and give teachers and staff as much information as possible. And then give them a survey that allows them to make some decisions about how they want to state their preference. So in the example, when we closed Abbott Loop, those schools, as Jim referenced, went to Cassoon and Trailside. And so we went to the staff. We explained how many FTE would be allocated to each of those buildings. And in the survey, they had three options. I would like to follow the students to Cassoon. I would like to follow the students to Trailside, or I would prefer not to go to either of those schools and I would like to be considered in the general staffing process with other displacements and be considered for other buildings. So we try to really give um staff as many, uh, teaching staff as many choices as possible around that. Um, teachers will also want to know when will they find out about their placement? And so we will um hopefully tee all of that up so they would receive their placement as soon as the FY twenty-six budget is finalized. Because the budget um will determine the FTE um and PTR for those buildings. So we'll know exactly how many staff members we'll have at each site. And then we'll be able to make those placements, but we'll have all of that dialed up so that we can announce that as soon as the budget is finalized in late February or early March. Um, non-classroom staff, our single incumbent positions, libraries, nurses, counselors, those positions where you typically just have one in each school. If there are openings at the receiving school where students are going, then those staff members who are being displaced would be considered for those openings if they want to go there. If there's not an opening at that school, then they would be part of the general um staffing process. But again, we would give them the opportunity to state their preferences and try to place them as high on their preference list as possible. Um, those teachers who choose not to follow students um to uh the the receiving schools, again, will just be part of the general displacement process that's part of our general staffing timeline and should know their placement by the time they go into spring break in the spring. Um, specialists, our psychologists, our OTs, PTs, adaptive PE teachers. Um, their FTE is um actually housed out of our related services department. And so every year uh those itinerant positions are assigned to schools based on student counts, and that would be true in this case as well. All of the situations I just described are involuntary transfers. Um, folks are considered displacements when their school closes. Like I said, we'll do our best to give them a preferential placement. But even if they receive a placement and they're not entirely happy, the good news is they still have one more opportunity to put in a voluntary transfer, which is a process that's outlined in the collective bargaining agreement for AEA. And so um they can interview for other open positions. If principals want to pick them up, they can still control their destiny to some degree um through that voluntary transfer process as well. Next slide. Um, when we look at our classified staff, uh Totem and ACE contracts both have processes for placing folks when they're displaced from a building. Again, we would um give them an opportunity to state their preferences. We would look at program needs across the district. So this would largely impact our clerical folks, our paraprofessionals, our tutors who might be in school that it's closing. Um, the good news is just through general attrition, through the number of vacancies we have, we should be able to place everybody in a site that is as high on their preference list as possible. Uh, student nutrition staff, our BPOs, our night crews, they'll be reassigned by their respective departments. Those departments will also have a process for collecting their preference and trying to place them as high as possible. Our temp positions, um, our crossing guards, our noon duties. Um, a lot of folks who occupy those really part-time positions, those temporary positions are there because they have a connection with a student at that school. We'd certainly give them an opportunity if they want to continue working for the district to follow that student and work at their at the new school the next year. So just kind of a wanted to highlight for the board, some of the ways and the processes we'll use to make sure that staff get taken care of in the process as well.
So I I believe. Because I didn't see any heads nodding, not up and down, um, that we we have. The bulk of the board members, although I I didn't um hear from Dora, I think she's still on probably. Um, but I believe that. We have some consensus that the Right Sizing discussion points were. Um, pretty much on track with at least what you're comfortable with now. Um, uh, the other, only other thing I really heard was um. You know, putting some thought into if a charter school were to occupy and of course we'll work that as staff actions and. Develop some template um for that as well. I. Believe I know it's a lot to throw this evaluation rubric at someone and say, hey, I'm going to give you five minutes. Tell me what you think. Um, because I've been working this for a while, just getting to this point. And it's it's so much. This was the simplest, easiest visual way to put it, but it's certainly more complicated. Um, but I I think that we've covered all the areas. Identified in the survey is areas that people thought were important to look at. Um, I think that we have a rubric. That. Gives us a good understanding of the building, the students, the programs. And and of course, then that next piece is the really detailed analysis with. Overlays of where people are having kids. Can buses support this? Yes or no? And all those other factors. Like how many SLC classes could you possibly put in a school before it's just too much? I mean, there are a lot of other things that. That'll never be cleaned in a rubric. Um, but um, I think we got about fifteen of us coming in Saturday. Um, to to start going through that. And and start making sure that that we're set for analyzing this. So I I feel. Somewhat confident right now that by and large, the board is in support of this direction. Um, knowing that it's not an official vote. And you can always feel uncomfortable later. But at this point, I think we're on track, yes.
Let me speak for me, but maybe we can just survey the board, Miss Ma- uh, Mr. President.
I would encourage everybody to put themselves on the record individually.
So I'm a yes, but I did, I did have a question, but I'll come back after we do our survey.
Member Jacobs?
Yep. So um, I'm comfortable with the the rubric and the evaluation components. Um, the other thing I would I would ask um is for board members to chime in if they are opposed to asking charter programs to um. Begin planning for if they are interested in um a building and in that those stars align. Um, begin exploring the transportation acts aspects, knowing that that may um allow them to. Have an easier path to obtaining one, um, a building that's um is deemed access based on this process. So if if there are board members who either way, thumbs up or thumbs down, would like to weigh in on that, I would appreciate it. Thanks.
Any other members? Seeing none, member Bellamy, did you want to comment?
Did have a question, just so that I'm. Telling people the right thing. So I noticed with our boundaries, uh. The focus is on elementary, middle. So why are, why are high schools not in that? Or because that is that secure for the? For the current or the next ten years?
We we are looking at one of the high schools for um. Other ways to. Uh, modify what's in that building to include the space that's available. Um, you know, I I give one example. When you look at the deed square footage and we're getting that corrected. But if you look at the deed square footage of Chugiak High, it does not include those massive maintenance. Space that they took over about thirty, twenty, thirty years ago. Because deed has always just used square footage and now we're working to clean that up. So when you take out. All that maintenance space and we walk through it. And during next summer, when um the the roof. Continues at Chugiak, there's going to be a number of classrooms torn down and made a little bit smaller. Um, a little more custom purpose, which will also reduce square footage. And when you do that, there's not this massive amount of square footage. In terms of classrooms. That's actually available. It it looked that way because we have reported for twenty or thirty years. Um, square footage with the deed thing that says divide. Three hundred and forty thousand by fourteen hundred, and that's how many it fits, but it. It really it's it's been wrong and we're getting that corrected. We also have maintenance at East High School. Um, that's been there for a long, long time. None of these two groups would actually fit at the Huffman complex, by the way. Um, is it possible that we could close a school and look at making it a maintenance? Facility? That's certainly possible, probably not our top priority. Um. But right now the numbers are are looking like we couldn't move Eagle River into Chugiak if we wanted to. So it's, it just doesn't really, it just, it doesn't fit. So we we are focused on middle schools. And elementaries for those reasons and. It, sometimes the numbers aren't really the numbers, aren't, aren't the full picture.
And I guess to remember Jacob's uh. Question or. Request that we weigh in. I'm not again, I I I'm not against. Coming up with whatever the criteria is for. Uh, charter schools using a a repurposed building or a. Uh, closed school. I just think that we have, I I just, it's it's a little, I'm a little concerned that it is. Happening right now. I just think we need to do. The big lift. And then come back to that piece. So that so that we don't, people, so that we just don't confuse people. Um. So that that's my only hesitancy. So and I and I don't know what that looks like. I just know what it feels like right now. It feels to me like. Like I wouldn't want SLP programs in every single, uh, uh, just a school of SLP programs. No, absolutely not. Um. But but charter schools are a possibility. They're not a guarantee. And if we're going to come up with. The language before we even close the school. It just feels different to me. So.
Mr. Chair. Member Jacob, yep, thank you. If I could address that point, um, I think any confusion is probably due to the way I worded it and then not just my intent. Which is to say that I am not attempting to design um. What priorities exist for use of a building? Um, should it be emptied based on um? The process of consolidation. I I'm only proposing that should it become evident that a charter or optional program be the best option? For a facility by administration that. The program that eventually is um awarded that building. Be able to um. Through some means in part or in whole. Stand up and or have a vision for standing up student transportation in line with our guardrail that we've unanimously approved. That has brought community support. So this isn't um. Treading new ground. This is you, we've, we've, we're opening up the roof. So can we replace the boiler too, is what I'm asking for. Thanks. Member Higgins?
Seems like it was about ten years ago. The legislature said that we had vacant space. We had to offer it to charter schools. I think they uh moved that way. It 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 could have been, it had to be about ten years ago because that became kind of a question or an issue that we raised. Uh, within that timeframe, I thought I recall.
If I could, if I could clarify, it um, they did specifically use the word may offer to charter school. Although clearly ASD has a history of. Doing that with both Aquarian and then um. With ANCCS. I I will put in Board Connect this Friday so people can get a. A perspective on on um. How much charter schools really save in leases? So we have one that spends about seven hundred thirty eight thousand a year, two around four hundred thousand. Um, two or three around three hundred to three hundred fifty thousand. One bus per year, just one bus. Costs a little over a hundred and ten thousand to operate. So we're not looking at this massive windfall and just to to like. Uh, expectation management of what it might even look like. It it's not this glut of. Transportation funding, but it. You know, certainly, once we get past naming schools, once the board gets past. Making decisions and then we go into uh memorandums and that kind of stuff. Um, you know, we'll do whatever the board wants.
Member Donnelly?
I haven't looked at that statute in a while. Could you give me a copy of that? The Charter School Stat-
I will email it tonight. Thank you.
I did want to add that uh, member Wilson texted that she is an affirmative to the guidelines. And that uh, in the process, if there's a way to work out transportation for. For special programs, she would hope that would happen as well. Apparently she's unable to to speak at the moment. Um. Member Jacobs?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. And and I appreciate that, Mr. Anderson, and I I fully intend intended that um a charter program based on the savings from going from a lease to a. District-owned building wouldn't be able to stand up um a complete. Um, transportation program based on those savings alone. However, um, if I feel like now is the time where. Um, if the board sends clear guidance, APCs could continue, could start that conversation as to what that might look like. Um, I would assume that we want to uh give them that heads up as soon as possible. Um. And so I I, in in response to, I think, member Bellamy's question of of why now, it's um, this is a a pretty significant ask. And so giving those folks as much of a heads up as possible is not only reasonable, I can't imagine. It becomes any easier with every month that we wait to delay to provide that guidance that this is a preference. Um, and and. And how things play out, um, should a program be able to be awarded to a charter optional program? So. That's the underlying thought about why now. I agree. I'm not looking to make decisions before we have to. But this is just common sense in line with what guidance we've already provided to the district.
And and that does clarify, that does clarify a lot of my um apprehension. Um. So yeah, I I and my my other thought is maybe we might need to look at policy. At some point, uh, maybe not right away, but um. Because if we are supporting our, you know, our goals and our guardrails, then we might need to make some policy changes in the future. Thank you.
Member Higgins?
I think one of the more interesting things that will take place is minute you start talking about boundary changes, this place is going to be full. Uh, I have been through it. That's worse than closing a school. It's amazing. The interactions and the type of um uh feedback we get, even when it is best for the kids, it makes sense to spread out. We tried to look at changes of that on the base. We were packed in here. Uh, so I'm just, uh, I I think when you look at like mirrors at a hundred and twenty percent right now. Uh, that is a difficult situation. Nobody wants to give that up if they're going to mirrors. But we've got it, we're going to end up with a lot of challenges there when you can't meet the ELL and SEL. Those, everybody who's watching, the English English learners, this is a special ed, you name it. But I think at fifteen of each for those fifteen percent, I believe. But it's going to be a real difficult challenge that way. So the minute we get into this, it's not just the schools. We've got to look at the boundaries. And the minute we do that, we're going to upset people. But just as long as we always get focused on what's best for the kids, we deal with the rest. That's really what I'm looking for for this thing is each one of these, what's best for the kids. And not just looking at the politics of it. I just want to stay away from that aspect of it.
We are at the top of the hour. If anyone has any more comments or if there's any unanswered questions for the panel. Seeing and hearing none, I would entertain a motion to recess into executive session.
Move to adjourn for to executive session for the purpose of uncontested student hearing, legal updates, negotiations and contracts.
Second.
Moved and seconded, we are in recess to executive session.